And to fight heartburn, might take ten and acids throughout the day, but you can take one product set for easier heartburn relief. One beats that. Tylosec, OTC, one pill, twenty-four hours, zero heartburn.
Friends, want to invite everybody to put yourself on mute as we begin.
Well, it's five after. Hello, everyone. This is your General Minister and President Reverend Terry Hord Owens. So delighted to see so many on the Town Hall Call today. It is important, as we are whole church together, that we continue to dialogue about the changes that we have decided upon at the General Assembly in Louisville in 2023. In particular, the resolution now called GA twenty-three forty-three. And your feedback and your conversation all along the way is so important. Last summer, as we were approaching, actually, starting with the summer of 2022, between then and the General Assembly in 2023, we hosted over thirty Town Halls, seeking feedback and conversation and even questions from folks all across the church. And as the implementation team has begun its work, we know how important it is in order to be faithful to our covenantal relationships, to continue to engage with, in dialogue beyond the implementation team and its committees. So that when we arrive in Memphis in July of 2025, just a year from now, we will be as informed and prepared as we can possibly be to make some important decisions about how this implementation will take place. After 2025, the General Board, the General Assembly will look different. We'll still be the Christian Church Disciples of Christ, but we are holding to the, really the call of our forbears to always have a spirit of continued renewal and any structural reform that follows from that as part of renewing on ongoing basis our covenantal fellowship. So let's turn to our agenda and we'll have a presentation that will follow along. You'll hear from myself, from Reverend Bill Spangler Dunning, who is the Chair of the Governance Committee of the General Board, and also serves as Regional Minister in Virginia, and our immediate past moderator, the Reverend Belva Brown Jordan, who chairs the Implementation Team. So as we enter into this presentation, you will hear from the three of us, and there will be time at the end to ask questions. But if you have a question or thought that comes to you, our team is monitoring the chat, so please feel free to do that. And again, put yourselves on mute. As we begin, we will say together the preamble to the design. I find this such an important thing for us to do. We are not a creedal people, but we're not anti-creedal. The preamble to the design really sets forth a theological understanding of who we are, and it informs our faith. We'll talk about what it means to actually implement Resolution GA twenty-three forty-three. And we'll hear from Implementation Team, the work that is being done by both the General Assembly Subcommittee, the General Board Subcommittee, and again, as I said, there will be time for questions and answers. So let's move ahead and on your screen, you will see of the words of our preamble to the design. There are many congregations that use this as a litany every Sunday in their worship service. It's printed in the Chalice hymnal. So would you join me together? Probably best for us to all keep ourselves muted, but would you join me as we together share this affirmation of our faith, which is the preamble to the design, our governing document?
As members of the Christian Church.
We confess that Jesus is the Christ.
The Son of the Living God. And proclaim him Lord and Savior of the world.
In Christ's name and by his grace. We accept our mission, witness, and service to all people. We rejoice in God, Maker of heaven and earth, and in God's covenant of love, which binds us to God and to one another. Through baptism into Christ, we enter into newness of life and are made one with the whole people of God. In the communion of the Holy Spirit, we are joined together in discipleship and in obedience to Christ. At the table of the Lord, we celebrate with thanksgiving, the saving acts and presence of Christ. Within the universal church, we receive the gift of ministry and the light of scripture. In the bonds of Christian faith, we yield ourselves to God that we may serve the one whose kingdom has no end. Blessing, glory, and honor be to God forever. Amen. Amen.
Hello all. My name is Reverend Bill Spangler Dunning. I serve as the Regional Minister in Virginia, but I also serve as the Chair of Governance for the General Church. And it is a delight to be with disciples today to take the time to go over this. I do want to talk a little bit about the one. The role of the Governance Committee in particular is to submit recommendations useful for the development of the life, mission and work and organization of our own, our Christian Church Disciples of Christ. So I want to take a little time to review the covenantal hopes that the Governance Committee had when we constructed the GA twenty-three forty-three, the amendments to the design of the Christian Church Disciples of Christ. Amendments to this, so we discerned a need to examine God's covenant with us as a church, a covenant with one another as we faced really unprecedented challenges in the life of the world that we all are aware of. We identified that our core work together was making, equipping, coordinating spiritual gifts, talents and resources, and to be good stewards across the whole life of the church. And I think this piece, that we also needed a more connected church to do the work that we were called to do together and to be the church that we actually said that we are. So that was kind of our hopes and dreams for putting together twenty-three forty-three that you see on the screen now. At least the parts of that. I want to sort of highlight a few of the things about the approved changes that we're looking at, just to kind of help you understand where we're headed and what we've been working on is one, let's take a look at the General Assembly. That is understanding that really as a General Assembly, we're always in session, not just once every three years or two years in the past. We will always be in session. Also, an understanding that for the General Assembly, there is, we're trying to work on language, a triannual session, that's the every-three-year piece, will convene every three years. And then an annual session, different language there, will convene online at least once a year. It will not replicate the in-person General Assembly. We're not trying to do, to do the same thing that we do in person that we do online, but we're saying we're always in session, have the ability to do that. In these sessions, there'll be time for education, discussion, discussion, and discernment. And this is also a key piece that we've talked about before. The Congregational Representation will consist of three reps on a three-year cycle for each congregation. We know that might be a lot, but it's, it's the freedom and we want to be more connected and ask for that and provide for that, that three reps from every congregation are given permission to do that. We want people involved if they will. I would hope that we'd have a problem with so many people being involved, but we're opening that up. GA provides an ongoing input into our mission priorities. Again, that more connected church, that more people are able to have input into who we are and how we go about that and be part of going about our mission priorities. The General Board piece, the hope is that it will function as a working board, not just a board that meets once a year, a board that actively works to fulfill the mission of the Christian Church. It will be a working board with committees that do significant work between the plinaries. Those who have working boards, you know how much it makes, helps people be more involved in the process rather than just meeting to make a decision here and there. It meets more than once a year. Most of the meetings will be virtual, but we also will have in-person meetings when, when that becomes needed or possible. Members of the General Board, and we'll get more into that, will be nominated by the General Nominating Committee to serve a six-year term. A more, we're hoping for a more open process for disciples, all disciples to submit recommendations for who will be on the General Board. This is again, that one piece of helping more people be connected throughout the whole church in our process of being church. So that's kind of the highlights from the approved changes and where we go next.
Hello, friends. Belva Brown Jordan here. It is so good to be with you. I am serving in the role of Implementation Team Chair. I have served as the former moderator of the Christian Church Disciples of Christ in the United States and Canada and was appointed in this position by our current moderator, Elder Clyde Hunt. And so one of the things, what I'd like to do at this point, this today, is to introduce you to the Implementation Team. The members of the Implementation Team were appointed and approved by the Administrative Committee. They come from different expressions of the church, from different geographic areas, and they bring a wide range of spiritual gifts to our work together. The Implementation Team meets once a month as a whole group, and we have working groups, task groups, that meet at least twice a month. There, there are, they are working groups that include persons beyond the core, this core team. And the core Implementation Team, as you can see, are names listed on the, on the screen and the roles that we play that gives you a sense of how involved this core group of people are. But as you can see with Hyatt Allen, Oscar Banks, Jeff Champeau, Bill Spangler Dunning, Yvonne Gilmore, Cindy Kim Hanks, Clyde Hunt, Eli Roland Young, Belva Brown Jordan, Terry Hord Owens, Evangelina Perez, Tamara Rotenberg, Allison Rorari, Diane Watkins, and Crystal Williams. Again, this is our core group of folk who are working on implementation of GA twenty-three forty-three, and they have been reaching out to other groups across the denomination for input along the way as we have been doing our work. And you're going to see some of the work that we have been doing as we continue in our time today. So our timeline, again, this work started way before September, October, September, October, twenty-twenty-three because it is immediately after General Assembly in 2023. The wheels were turning. Again, our moderator Clyde Hunt approached me about serving as chair. But in September and October, we recruited the team and established a timeline. And you can see everything from reporting to the Administrative Committee because the Implementation Team reports to the Governance Committee and therefore Administrative Committee and the General Board. So we're not doing our work in isolation. In November, we hosted listening sessions and conversations with a variety of church leaders. It included the College of Regional Ministers, it included cabinet members from our various general units and others. And then the task groups created and worked on, outlined what their assigned tasks were. So we have a group that's working on communications, a group that specifically is focused on working on General Assembly, and one that specifically focused on working on General Board. We actually were able to come together and have a retreat in January of 2024. And then again, we came back and reported out to the Administrative Committee and the General Board, the work that we'd been doing between the time that we were formed as a group and was clear, clearer, continuing to actually develop some clarity about how to focus our work. We reported back to the Administrative Committee and the General Board. And then from, you know, now until June of 2024, you can see where we hosted other listening sessions, conversations with the Council of General Ministers and Ministries and the College of Regional Ministers. And our work, our work continues, our work continues.
Thank you, Belva. I want you to pay attention to the title of this slide. It says General Assembly. It's important for us to understand that General Assembly is not really an event. General Assembly is our church. The legal name of our denomination is the General Assembly of the Christian Church Disciples of Christ in the United States and Canada. So when you see minutes from the General Assembly, you will see the General Assembly comma, meeting in Louisville in July of 2023, decided. And it's really important, as Bill said earlier, we came to really understand that we have a real need for connection across all expressions of our church, but particularly ensuring that our congregations understand not only who we are, but how we do our work, how we prioritize our work. And we need that, we need that engagement across the whole life of the church. Disciples, when the General Assembly meets, you'll be able to participate in all the sessions of the General Assembly in three different modes. When we have our triennial session, let's kind of work right to left. That will be the traditional in-person gathering that we are used to, that's moving from a cycle of every two years to every three years. The exciting thing here is that in addition to those who would travel to be at a central location, we're planning to be able to use your personal devices so that you could connect to a live feed of the Assembly and that we would have satellite sites where local congregations could also host the live feed of the Assembly. We know that one of the big obstructions that keeps people from attending the personal, in-person event is just the cost of travel and hotel. And so we have technology available to us now that will allow us not just to stream worship, but the important thing here is that you will actually be able to participate, not only in workshops, but to see the business and those who are voting delegates. We're working on an ability to allow you to vote remotely. So the three, the three-year cycle, the triennial session will be a hybrid, people being able to participate online as well as in person. The annual sessions, we won't be in person per se, but we do imagine local gatherings, communal gatherings where you're gathered at a church, perhaps that's equipped with the right kind of technology, good wifi, the ability to project on a screen, microphones in the room where people are perhaps seeing myself and the moderator team sort of heading the meeting, but people in the audience are able to come and speak and not just listen, actually speak and participate. I think it's just really important that we understand how hard we are working to remove all barriers to participation. It won't be enough to be online and not give people the ability to have voice in the room and the ability to vote. So these three modes will be available, all of them available at a triennial session. And on the annual session, when we're meeting online, you'll be able to connect individually, but we hope that more of you will be able to connect in small gatherings across the life of the church. It's important to note that we'll try to get those schedules done so that before we hit the, the triennial session, you'll know what the schedule is for those annual sessions before that in-person session happens. A lot of questions that we got last summer were about what will these congregational delegates do? Each congregation will now have three voting delegates. The old system had two plus sort of a tiered system if you had a larger church. For issues of equity, the decision was made to give every congregation three voting representatives. So we want to connect these local congregations with the General Church. Before, it might have been based on who could go or churches used to be able to, congregations used to be able to send and pay for their representatives to go, and that's not the case any longer. We want to be able to let the congregational delegates know about the topics that are being considered by the General Assembly. And in, we want congregations to tell us what are the issues that are out there on the ground that you think the church needs to be paying attention to. We want to facilitate opportunities for, listen to these words, listen, learn, discern, and then decide. Every session of the annual assembly will not be about a vote unless a vote is necessary. One of the things that we have suffered in our current system where we meet in person every two years is not enough time as a whole church to dialogue and talk about really important, hard-hitting, and sometimes divisive issues before we come to the floor of a General Assembly. So we want to use these annual sessions as opportunities to do that education, either on issues where the church might want to make social witness, updating and educating the congregations about what's happening in the life of regions and general ministries, and hearing from the church about the things that they think we need to prioritize as we think about not only our witness, but our mission. And so we also want congregational delegates to be collaborating and communicating with the members of your home congregation. You as a congregational delegate should not be the only one who knows what's going on. We really want to be sure that our congregations are more aware of how the regional and general expressions of the church function and the pivotal role that our congregations have in our governance and in our life together as we discern the priorities for mission. And when it's necessary, yes, we'll be able to vote on resolutions and bring those matters to the table. We won't have to wait every two or three years until we gather in person. The moderator, in fact, will have the ability to call the General Assembly, these delegates into session digitally, whenever the need arises, making us a lot more nimble and responsive to the needs of the church and a lot more responsive to the society in which we live. So more connected, more engaged, but still leveraging the technology so that we don't have to physically be together in order to make these important decisions, using this time to learn and listen to one another and not just vote up or down on various issues.
So in addition to this description of what about the congregational delegates, we also have included some required qualifications and some desired qualifications. So the, the task group working on this has said, membership in a local congregation of the Christian Church Disciples of Christ in the United States and Canada is an important required qualification. We want people who are present and active in congregations to be the ones who have, who are selected to be congregational delegates. We also want them to be active participants in a ministry of the congregation, be capable to be a leader in the congregation, familiar with the interest of the wider church with, and at least familiar with, if not interested in the wider church, have some interest in discussions that often happen in General Assembly, and make a commitment to General Assembly sessions digitally or in person and/or in person, and be willing to serve three-year consecutive, three consecutive years in this role. Now, we know that just as there's concern, will we be able to find three people? Will those three people be able to serve for three years? We know that we, the other thing we need to do is know that there's some flexibility in the process. This, these are the desired qualifications that the, the task group has been working on. But we know that life happens and sometimes what we intend to do may not always roll out the way we, we want them to. But we also want people who have some care and excitement about what we do together as disciples. And then we have even given some thought to what a selection process might look like. And the congregational delegate to the General Assembly is, again, the three years, we've talked about it being a volunteer, three-year term. And, and we've been thinking about like how much time commitment is, might be involved. We are approximating that it might be three hours a month on an average, with about sixty percent of your time spent leading up to the digitally, but digitally attending and debriefing meetings of the General Assembly. So again, these are some approximations about how much time. You know how it is when you invite somebody to be the chair of a committee in your congregation and you don't give them a timeframe and then people find themselves in that position forever and ever and ever. And we do want to encourage kind of identifying how much work or how much time, what the time commitment is and, and what the, the term of service might be in this particular role. And then we have talked about some suggested selection process. Again, we know congregations have their own ways of choosing leaders in their congregation. And so we want it to encourage your congregational delegate to be selected in that same way. But congregations can choose by any method that works for them, but an election by the congregation, usually regular officer election process. The congregations can nominate and elect one delegate each year alongside its full slate of officers. It might appoint a congregational governing body that, and this governing body of the congregations could elect who that delegate to be. Or you might select a constituent by, select by constituent groups. So congregation could designate a delegate to be selected by a particular constituent group within the congregation, whether it's church women or church men or youth, et cetera. But we, we, we want to not lock congregations into a particular process, but want instead this process to be organic with how the congregation typically selects leaders in, in their congregation. Okay.
Thank you. And I do see questions being put into the chat and we will certainly come back to those. So just hold on, we are seeing your questions and we'll get to them shortly. Now we're going to talk about the General Board. Under today's rules, the General Board meets once annually. It's comprised of about a hundred and twenty-seven people total with one representative from each region, one representative from each general ministry. The regional ministers and the general ministry leaders are their ex officio by virtue, by virtue of their office. They're there because of their role, but without vote. And when you take the thirty-one regions plus the thirteen general ministries, then there's a small group of about seventeen that are chosen at large throughout the life of the church. But the adopted changes that have been made is that the, the General Board is going to focus more on missional priorities from these congregational representatives who are participating in the General Assembly. So with more frequent participation as General Assembly, the design calls the General Board a smaller deliberative body that is there to carry out the work given to it by the General Assembly. And so the General Board will also act in terms of making statements of witness, following the church's engagement. following the church's engagement at general assemblies. There will be a committee to establish mission priorities, continuing to think about renewal and structural reform, acting on policies and procedures as we need to, doing the work and the due diligence to maintain the church's 501(c)(3) status, making changes, recommending changes to the design as as the Governance Committee did this last time, and approving regional boundary changes. And the life of the church regions have over the years made decisions to come together, redraw their boundaries to include or group congregations differently, do regional ministry differently. And in the past, those changes had to go all the way to the general assembly, which took a couple of years to enact. And given the way the general board will be functioning, decisions like that can be made by the general board without having to go to the general assembly. And even if their issues or concerns that they might want to have feedback about, we we're meeting with the general assembly at least once a year. So stewardship again will be a core responsibility of the general board. The Finance Committee, currently called the Mission Finance Committee, will regularly evaluate, revise, and improve our church-wide funding system, what we now call Disciples Mission Fund or DMF. DMF has been on a steady decline for decades. And it is time, and this governance structure now gives us a more nimble apparatus within which to look at these concerns and really construct a funding system that speaks to who we are as a church now. The the general board will be comprised of about fifty voting delegates. So let's go to the the next slide. What what's the whole purpose of the general board, right? There's certainly the accountability. All regions and all general ministries are accountable to the general board and also to the general assembly. So we will still receive reports regularly from all of our ministries. The general board through the administrative or what we'll call the Executive Committee is still the place of grievances, sort of the Court of Appeals, if you will, around conflict or issues that may arise in the life of the church. Fiscal oversight, overseeing audits, reviewing the finances of all of our regional and general ministries, any inquiries that would need to be made about the health and viability of any ministries, establishing budgetary procedures. And again, fundraising and and stewardship education in the life of the whole church. Governance work groups. The Governance Committee through the Executive Committee will be looking at policy, thinking about operations, policy to help us make become a more efficient organization and a more accountable organization. And also, the general board will continue to set the business and the agenda for the general assembly. Vision and direction really for the church, education, communicating, setting priorities for mission and social witness. Members of the general board will be elected by the whole church and approved by the general assembly to serve in these roles, working alongside the General Minister and President and the moderator and the two vice moderators. So it's really important that we choose well. And one of the questions was, whoa, will these folks be willing to serve six years? It's really important that we give the people on the general board enough runway time to both become oriented with the process and to stay around long enough to help make decisions that are informed for the betterment of the church. Our current environment sees our general board turn over every two years. You come to one meeting and then that's your first, the next meeting, the next year is your last. And you really don't get a chance to live with or discuss or learn about the issues facing the church. So that longer term for this group of people who will be nominated by the entire church and voted on by the general board and the general assembly, we think it's really important that we get folks who, the right folks, a diversity of experience, a diversity of professional background, as well as a diversity of identity and racial ethnic background. It's going to be so, so important in order for us to become a more working general board, doing this work on behalf of the church.
So I want to take a little time to just talk about what the, who's going, you know, the composition of the general board. People ask that question, like, what's it going to look like? Terry was kind of referring to that as we moved in here. It's it's fifty delegates. Twenty-one people will be on the Executive Committee, thirty-one regional ministers, thirteen general ministries as named in the design. Now, that sounds like, did we even reduce the general board? But but there are some some things that change in that system. But that's the composition of the general board. And then the the selection piece here is that people will be nominated by the nomination committee. And I'm going to get a little bit into how that process, because I serve on the subcommittee for the general board here, and and I'll tell you a little bit more about how that that works. The the so individuals will be actually nominated by the nominating committee. But before that, there's a process where the with the names that the nominating committee get. And I want to I want to get into that that part. As part of that, we're going to identify skills and talents that are needed for that particular general board. Rather than just get random individuals, there'll be a time where we say, this is what we need on the general board for the church right now in this moment of time. We put it out to the whole church and then we get recommendations and and suggestions in a process back to the nominating committee of here is a really good person that fits your skills, and then allowing the nominating committee to look through all of those and choose what makes the best team for that particular session. The third part, there's also really important for us to be the church that we are called to be, which is that we need to maintain a representation of the the wider church of making sure that we're in whatever we do, we have a way of measuring to make sure that we are choosing people from the whole church, that the that the general board looks like who we are as whole church. And so that that's part of what we're building into this as well. Next line. Some of the qualifications that we've identified that we want in a general board member, and this will go into these kind of qualifications will be part of the recommendation process from from anyone in the in the church. One, spiritual maturity with an understanding of disciples' identity. We aren't just a neutral church. We want people who really understand who we are as disciples if you're going to serve on the general board. A willingness to be a servant leader with effective interpersonal organizational and communication skills. You know who these people are within the life of of your church and and other people do too. Demonstration and appreciation for differing opinions. That's who we are as disciples, and it's really important, a trait that we're looking for. Digital and financial literacy and competence would be very, very helpful. Strategic thinker, incorporating ethical and visionary leadership skills. We aren't just there to make rubber stamp decisions. We are a working board is what we're looking for. So we need creative, strategic, visionary thinkers. And agility, responsiveness, creative, problem-solving skills, demonstrating the desire to be a lifelong learner. These are just some of the the characteristics and traits that we'll be looking for in in general board members, and and there are more. And in this process, as I I alluded to, imagine that instead of just a few people being recommending people to the general board, anyone within the disciples church in this process will be able to say, this person in my church is would make a great general board member. They then fill out a form recommending that that person be considered. That person then gets a form, fills it out as an application, so that anyone out there, all of our gifted and talented people can be can be recommended to serve on the general board. And that's what the opening up to the whole church and trying to be more connected is about as part of this process. Now, at the same time, we want to make sure that in this process, there's a way, not unlike the way ministers fill out our own profiles, where where when we we fill out, this is who we are. And then our references sort of say, here's here's how we see them. These are the gifts and skills that we see. And so there'll be a reference kind of way of referring these individuals. But and also a process of which regional ministers also, just like our search and call papers for clergy, will need to 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 write a reference for that, to acknowledge, we know this person. And and so the same thing, regional ministers, general ministries, executive committee. And then, of course, eventually, all of this comes to the nominating committee with a fuller understanding of who it is that's being recommended to serve on the general board with all of these references, recommendations and feedbacks. So we have a better sense of who they are and where, how they represent the whole of the church. The nominating committee then will be able to make a more informed decision about who ends up on the general board, but yet with the input and fullness of the life of the church. So that's that's our hope and dream, and I look forward to questions about this, because I know I can't say everything about it, but in this opening presentation, that's what I'd like to say.
We're moving to quickly to the close. So if you do have questions, don't forget to put those into the chat and we'll address these. And we want to talk a little bit about the assumptions for future general board participation. There has long been a conversation about who funds this work in the life of the church. At the large size of the general board, as you might imagine, it's quite an expensive endeavor. So the general board has had conversations about how it will fund its work moving forward. So here are the assumptions. There are the participation by the regional ministers representing thirty-one regions. They will pay their expenses. The regions will pay for those expenses, and they will have voice but no vote on the general board. Now, the general ministries, there are thirteen general ministries. They will pay their expenses, voice but no vote. Ex officio, for your information, can be either with or without vote. Ex officio simply means that you are there by virtue of your position or your office. So regional ministers and general ministry leaders will have voice at general board but no vote. The fifty delegates who are elected to serve on the general board, the Office of General Minister and President, what we call the O G M P, will cover those expenses. So if you are elected or nominated to serve on the general board, your expenses for any in-person meetings, including travel and lodging and food, will be covered. You will have voice and vote as a voting member of the general board. The Executive Committee, which includes what we now know as the Administrative Committee plus the work of the Governance Committee. The new Executive Committee will be twenty-one members. It's a subset of the general board. It will continue to serve as the board of the Office of General Minister and President. The O G M P will cover those expenses, and the members of the Executive Committee on the Executive Committee do have voice and vote. The only exceptions to that are those who are members of who are regional ministers or general ministry heads. There are two of each on the Executive Committee. They do not have vote or voice in any aspect of, they have voice but no vote, I'm sorry, on the Executive Committee as well. So the future Executive Committee, nine voting members from the general board. There are nine members who serve ex officio by virtue of their position. So there are two regional ministers, two general ministry leaders who have no vote. The ex officio members with vote are the moderator, the moderator-elect, the first and second vice moderators, and the G M P. Those are all ex officios serving by virtue of their position with vote. So the moderator team and the G M P do have vote. There are three members of the general board who have no vote, the corporate secretary, the treasurer, and the parliamentarian, who are members of the board but have no vote and are there to perform organizational functions.
We're now at the point in our time together where we'd like to entertain questions. And and so if you have questions, you can put them in the chat, or we'll turn to Yvonne Gilmore, who's kind of monitoring things to help us keep track of questions that that come up.
Okay, can you see?
Okay, yes. Hi there. I'm happy to to read them and we'll invite our presenters to to answer. Will there be the option to respond at the triennial session from the local assembly or personal gathering?
Absolutely, and that's what we need. Depending upon what generation you're in, the word hybrid means something to you or it doesn't. We're still dealing with, is it digital? Is it online? Is it hybrid? But we want to be sure the spirit of the general assembly is that if you're going to participate, we must get your voice into the room and you must be able to vote. So we won't be able to do this unless we allow that. So if you are at a local congregation and you see the meeting up on the screen and there are people gathered, say, in Memphis, it won't happen for Memphis, but let's say it it's in a city, you will still have the ability to go to a a a mic and speak or whatever digital device, however that works out. That's the intent, is that you would be able to participate.
Thank you, Sharon O'Reilly, for that question. Erin Cash inquires, where she says, this is fantastic work. I'm curious if we think folks will be willing to serve a six-year term.
May it be so.
Well, you know, we hope people will be willing to do that. And we think that because this is, again, a shift from you go on the general board and you serve and you're on there for two years and then you're off, and you're just getting, you know, some footing and some traction, and then you're gone. And and so the thought is that people being there a little bit longer will give them more information, may help them to be more informed so that they can speak from a position of being more informed. And so we're hoping that there are people who are will be eager to serve for six years. And and we're hoping there are people who, let's say they serve for three and think, for whatever reason, they can't continue on on. They can pass along that information to someone who comes after them or or somehow share what has what their experiences have been. So I think ultimately, time will tell how well people are willing to serve for those six years. But our 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 thinking and our prayerful thoughts are that there will be people who will be willing to really get in there, hang out for six years, and be more informed as they help us be the church we're called to be.
Yeah.
Reverend Sharon Nichols, she asked, does the three-year term line up with the G A assembly?
And yes, in fact, the the goal is to, at the twenty twenty-five general assembly, the new members of the general board who will serve from twenty-five to twenty-eight will be voted upon. So that's kind of job one, but the terms will will last from general assembly until the next general assembly, and that person would participate in all the in-between annual sessions. So yes.
Reverend Nichols also further says she wants to suggest mental illness education and training to local congregations or regions, that that's an important mission, especially since COVID hit us all and often isolated us. Thank you, Reverend Nichols, for that suggestion. Roger Waddell, he says, can board members serve more than one six-year term? Or is it limited to one term?
And Bill, do you want to address that? I don't know that we've put any limits on that, but you can see you're on that committee.
For the, we haven't yet determined whether or not one can then serve a second term. We'll we'll take that into consideration in our subcommittee. Again, what's really important as we work through this is to make sure that that those who serve on the general board represent the whole of the church. And we we don't get into a problem that we have sometimes when and everything is that sometimes, I know, maybe it's not true of your boards, but it seems like sometimes the same people end up on the board all the time, and we want to spread who can be involved in the life of the church. So.
I I think the other thing to note is that six-year term really involves two triennial cycles, right? So that is, it's not just one long cycle, it's two triennial cycles. And and so I I think there will be plenty of opportunity for those people to get engaged. And then hopefully, we'll we'll see more and more people wanting to be involved.
Yeah, and I just want to add that while implementation team is working with this language in the design, that along with our design comes special rules and for general assembly, for the Administrative Committee, for general board. And those will also need to be tailored to fit the language of of the assembly. So it may be in one of those documents. So it may be in one of those documents, when we get to that point, that there's more specificity about whether or not someone can do more than a six-year term. But we will keep that question in front of us as we move from this part of our work to looking at those special rules and whatnot that accompany our design. So thank you, Roger, for the question.
A few few more questions. Dottie Cook, she asks, will congregation location and congregation size be considered in selection of general board delegates? Will the location and size be considered?
Location and size. And again, we're moving from what one would call just a representative board to a global working board. So while your congregations will have representation and voting delegates who participate in the general assembly, those who are elected to the general board come from congregations, but they are not there to serve congregations. They are being chose or to represent only congregations or even regions or general board, general ministries. They're there to use their gifts on behalf of the whole church. So yes, the the geography, are you coming from a a small rural community versus an urban church? Yes, we'll be looking at all those dimensions of diversity to ensure that there is representation across the whole life of the church. California is not Kentucky, right? Or North Carolina is not Chicago. And and we understand that, and that's something that we've had a lot of conversation with, particularly with the regional ministers and members of regional boards, who wanted to be sure that the unique nature of their own local culture would be represented in the board. So that's one of the dimensions of diversity. Geography and the type of congregation from which you come. But it's important to remember, you're not coming to the general board to represent a particular constituency. You're coming as a member of our church with particular gifts and you're being asked to think on behalf of the whole church.
Because our life together is similar enough that, you know, there's a voice from a particular congregation that is the same voice or the same issue or the same concern that's coming from multiple congregations across the life of the church. So we also want to just kind of keep that, keep that in mind.
Finally, Terry Kuhn asks, will this presentation be distributed to today's attendees?
Yeah, yeah, I I think that depends on, well, there's no, there's no reason not to share the slides, I think, with others. We do have other town hall meetings coming along and and depending on what kind of questions we have and what kind of tweaking or adjustments or that we might need to make, that may happen along the way. But I think I think in general, the information that we've shared today is shareable. So I'll, you know, leave it to our Office of General Minister and President staff to do some follow-up in that regard.
I I do think it's important that you recognize that these, this is not the final iteration of what we're doing. We're holding these town halls so that you can see what our thinking is to date. So that if you have ideas or thoughts or feedback that might shift or alter, we can then take that feedback as we continue our work, as the committees continue their work. We are moving towards, first of all, an update with the administrative committee at the end of October. And then ultimately, the implementation, which will really be codified in those special rules for the general board and general assembly, that will come as a resolution that will be presented first to the general board next April and then to the general assembly next July. So just bear in mind that what you have today on July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four is not the formal proposal. We probably need to stamp it with draft or something as a watermark so that people, that would be my only concern, that you understand this is a work in progress, that there is still plenty of time to invite other people to attend these town halls. We will keep our F A Q, frequently asked questions site, going for the covenant project. That worked really well the last time that as we got these questions, we would post the questions and the answers on the website so that you could see how, what questions others had, because other people may have exactly the same questions that you have. So it's certainly a work in progress. And it it's the culture of our church, right? Everybody has a voice. And we want to be, that's why we're starting now, a year ahead of time. We want to be sure that as many folks can weigh in as possible. We'll continue to have conversations with the Council of General Ministries, the Cabinet, and with the College of Regional Ministers. I talk about what's happening with this work everywhere I go. And so we will continue to be in conversation. I do want to acknowledge that we have our our moderator, Elder Clyde Hunt, who is here on the screen, and our moderator-elect, Cindy Kim Hanks. Both of whom are in the implementation team, but I do see that they're with us. We've got an interim regional minister, Pax Jones, is here. Haven't been able to see who else, but got a wide range, folks who work for general ministries. I'm I'm seeing faces and names on the second screen. So thank you, elders and deacons and congregational members. Please share information. And Yvonne, perhaps we could put the, oh, she has already done that, beat me to it, the the town halls and the link where they can go to register for those. If you're not registered for Disciples New Service, now's a really good time to do that. Go to disciples.org, sign up for all the newsletters so that you're in touch. Even if you're not on social media, DNS in the newsletter will keep you informed. Follow us on all the social media platforms. Now, more than ever, we need our church to be connected and we're working really hard to be sure that we're using all the platforms that are available to us to do that.
Terry, I just want to say, just thank you to to all who were on. This has been an overwhelming response. And as Terry has indicated, please advise all that that you may know to be a part of the next session. This is really very encouraging. So thank you.
Anything else? I think I've had my remarks. Are there closing?
A believer of closing prayer, yeah.
Elva, did you have, Belver or Bill, are there any closing remarks that you would like to offer?
Again, expressing my words of appreciation for everyone who has taken the time to join us today. And again, reiterating, this is a work in progress and your feedback and input and your questions are really important. So we appreciate it. Thank you. And just thanks, shout out to the implementation team and the task groups that are working because they, you can see that they have really taken on this responsibility on behalf of the whole church, and we're appreciative of that. Thank you.
Yeah, and what I would say, just before I pray, is that this this has really been exciting and a fun part, fun to be part of, to see the life church. As much as we're changing the general church, I, as a regional minister, am already seeing how it weighs. This is also going to help the, even my own region of Virginia, thinking about different ways of doing regional assembly to make sure more of our people can participate, including those places having, imagine churches that we have ways, people can go to a church in different parts of the region and still be participating in a regional assembly that takes place. I'm excited. I'd love to pray. So let us pray together. God, you are a God who lives in between us, tagging us together, trying so hard to help us be the body, healthy and in care and love for one another. Bless this church and let us together, as your body, as your church, change this world for the better. In your name we pray. Amen. Blessings all.
Blessings all. Thank you so much.